The time being, 7 o'clock. We'll open the Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting on June 2nd, 2022. All members present, including Brendan Elliott, on the conference phone. And we'll read the agenda. So there are no appointments or hearings tonight. We have discussion of SAI Communications LLC with Ann McGinnis for Verizon Wireless at 926 Plymouth Street. Removal and replacement of equipment on a cell tower. We have CNA Realty Trust at 101 Monpont Street, where it's a request for extension of site plan approval. Pasturine status. And we have bills, meeting minutes, and correspondence from Really Rails Back Walmart, adding additional lighting to online grocery pickup area. Emails from Isabel Samo's of 12 Sherwood Drive for drain adjustment for Highland Woods, with photos, notice and letters from towns, and letters from Halifax departments, boards, and committees. Other business, we have site plans for signatures. We have some letters for signatures, reorganization of board members, registry of deeds signature letter for 2022 signatures, and ZBA comprehensive permit for the Country Club Estates 40B project. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as read.
Thanks.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So the SAI Communications LLC, Ann?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, P D M. This should be relatively brief. I, the discussion is just to confirm whether or not site plan approval is required for these changes. And then if it is, I have the application prepped in with me, and I'll just go ahead and submit that formally to you. So Verizon Wireless is proposing to make changes to its existing equipment on the tower located at 920 Plymouth Street. The tower is owned by Industrial Communications currently. And Verizon Wireless is proposing to remove and replace 12 existing antennas, remove and replace six existing remote radio heads, remove two small junction boxes with one large junction box. And then there's no changes to the current ground space equipment or configuration. So it's all just upgrading its equipment on the tower. Pretty simple equipment upgrade. But again, if full site plan approval is required, we'll just go ahead and submit that application tonight.
Okay. You said 920, is it 920?
926.
Oh, okay. No, that's all right, I just wanted to be sure. Well, so...
I would consider that under maintenance and upgrading. I don't see how that would require review of the site plan.
Yeah, and FCC doesn't let us say anything anyways, so...
Will I get better reception on my cell phone?
Hi, Verizon.
Hi, Verizon.
Hey, Verizon. Working on my house.
Other than the number, just replacing, no height differentials or anything like that?
No change to the existing height. There are required modifications to the existing mounts, so that's included the thimble scope work as well.
Are they on the tower, the mounts?
The mounts are on the tower. And just the mount analysis determined that there's some reinforcements required as part of this scope work.
Okay.
Is there any problem liability-wise or anything like that? What's required? You leased the space, right?
We leased the space from Industrial Communications. And so most towns just require us to go through the building permit process, but the building inspector thought that maybe site plan review was required. He said in most instances it's waived, but he wanted that determination maybe before he issued the full permit, so...
We had a similar event last year with one on Monpont Street, I think next to you guys. And we just looked at their plans and approved it, basically, isn't that...
You can't find it anywhere, so...
Right. Right. FCC.
There's no change in use, there's no change in anything.
No change in use, no.
So does anybody have a motion?
Make a motion to, I don't even think that we're waiving, make a motion to agree that a site plan review is not required for the maintenance and upgrading of the antennas.
I agree with that.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, CNA Realty Trust?
Yeah, we're just here to ask for, we just like a discussion. We were going to come to your last meeting, but it was canceled.
Yeah.
Waiting on the engineer is basically what we're doing.
Yeah, it's a kind of a ladder as well.
How come so long?
Well, we were going to just come to your last meeting and ask for...
No, I mean November 10th, the extension being till November 10th. How come so far out?
No, 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 it's not till, no, it's not November 10th.
Definitely in July.
It's submitted on November 10th and asking through July 30th.
Oh, I misread that. I thought you were looking for an extension till November 10th. I thought you were looking for an extension till November 10th.
We're just waiting on the engineers, I mean, just trying to get it all, it's...
They're all extremely busy, so it's been a struggle in itself, so... We've been...
It's not us, it's the engineers.
Nothing has changed, but we did have the board party deliver it.
What else?
Yeah.
Anybody have anything to say?
Nope, I don't see a problem, see it straight forward.
No changes, nothing to do?
No, that's the board party, that's the only additions.
Just the engineers holding everything up?
Correct.
Everybody's backlog.
Correct.
Hurry up and wait.
It's hard, it's horrible. I mean, we don't want to lose the market. It's crazy.
I'll make a motion to approve their request for the extension of the temporary site plan approval till July 30th.
I'll second that motion.
Just a quick question, if this is brand new, can I vote on this? Or is this from a previous hearing? Okay. I didn't know if it was pending.
To give you the background, we allowed them the winter until now with not doing a site plan. And now we're just extending.
Yeah, it was a temporary, I have a plan on five, I don't know if you've seen it.
We went over it, yeah. Oh, he didn't, he didn't.
I didn't know if he had a chance to look at it, but it was a temporary until we can get the engineer to finalize it.
But again, the extension is separate from the actual plan and everything, so... I don't want to cause any problems.
The ball is right there for both of you.
Can we try for June 30th instead of, and then try and...
I mean, we can try for June and then come back in and ask for another extension.
Although, that doesn't make sense because we won't even be able to get it on the agenda until...
If they get it beforehand, they can always come in.
I certainly will, I certainly will.
We want to get it done too, believe it.
Yeah.
Brendan, any thoughts?
Nothing for me, sounds good.
So there's a motion on the table in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Now we're on to the pasturine status.
Yeah, this was interesting.
So my thought process, guys, is that I was thinking I would read the letter in rapid so that it kind of takes anything off the bus and we read it out loud and then discuss it. Thoughts?
Which letter is that, this one right here?
No, his, I'm sorry, not a letter, an email, my bad. Does everybody agree with that? Would be a good way to go about it?
Amy, you're talking about the letter where, or the email that he said that he's not going to apply to the list that was given to him and finish the road?
To see where we're at, do you agree with that statement? Like that I should read that out loud for everybody to hear?
Yeah, definitely. Because I think, I think from that point, if it's not public knowledge of what was said in the email, therefore it is not on our shoulders. Again, like everybody thinks it's something that we're doing. It's, we're just divulging the information of the specialist.
All right, then I'm going to read this.
Wait, hold on. But I also wouldn't want to take anything out of context and read one... I don't think we should read the whole thing, but I don't want to take a...
I'm just talking about this.
That's what I'm saying, does that take this out of context if we take like a complete correspondence and then just like read one section out of it? You know what I mean? That's not always fair.
Well, we've had meetings on pretty much the rest of it. Do you mean like start earlier in that, in this string? Is that what you mean, start earlier in it? Is that what you're saying?
So Mark, was that Mark? I didn't hear Mark.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying, though? I just don't like the idea of taking one or two sentences out of a whole conversation and presenting just that.
Yeah, so I think what Amy was thinking, or correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time we had this conversation was when the developer was in front of us and the last conversation was, here's a letter. Or here, we're going to put together a list of basically what, you know, the checklist of what needs to get done in order to proceed. And I think, and I'm so sorry I'm not there in person, but I think what Amy was trying to do is just read from that point to current, which would be the email that came in from him saying that what his response to that checklist was. Am I, am I correct to...
Absolutely correct.
That's where we're at?
That's what I was going to propose.
So I get what you're saying, Mark, but up to this point, like there's minutes of all the discussion of the past discussion up to this point. So now we're just picking it up where we left off? Or does that not, is that not good?
I mean, the rest of it, the rest of the emails are about how we didn't have a quorum to meet on whatever day it was, Thursday, the 20th? Was it the 20th? Right, right there. So we pushed forward till today. The rest of the emails are that.
Yeah, all right.
It won't line up with what you were saying?
Yeah, so you're interested in...
This, and then it goes on to the next page and then reading this, and then discussing.
All right, which is what he is directly, yeah, stating to us.
Right.
All right, I understand.
Yeah, Mark, I agree with you. If all we were doing was reading one section of it and not having full disclosure of the rest of it, I don't think that that would be fair, I think, or unbiased. But I think what Amy's about to read is just picking up where we left off. And now this is where we now stand. Because where we were three meetings ago was saying this is the checklist and this is what we're going to get done. And this doesn't seem like what she's about to read is following up with the same... It's not parallel to that anymore.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So this email here is on pasturine, and it's from John Paquette, Paquette, sorry. Wednesday, May 18th at 10:20 a.m. He sent it to some people that live in the neighborhood, our secretaries and the board. And it says, "We will not be attending the planning board meeting as we are withdrawing our request to amend the conditions of subdivision due to a change in market conditions and increased cost of roadwork and house construction. It is no longer economically feasible for us to complete the roadwork. We have tried to get an agreement with the town for over two years and have been met with roadblocks at every turn. The idea that it will now be possible to add more items from a plan that was not even in the possession of the planning board and that we were not presented with it is absurd. The only option for us at this point would be to reduce the work we originally proposed, attachment Exhibit C." I don't think it's here, because I was looking for it. "Or have the town reimburse us for some of the cost. If the town is interested in moving forward with either of those options, please let me know and I will write up an itemized proposal. Thank you, John Paquette." Then Joanne emailed Ms. Kenyon. Hi, and here she is.
Exhibit C is the last page.
Oh, thank you.
Right before the bill, just for that, that page.
Thanks, Joanne. Oh, all right, all right. Okay. So Ms. Kenyon sent an email to our secretary, Joanne Fross, and it states, I'm sorry, Joanne sent an email to Ms. Kenyon saying, "Please below, see below Mr. Paquette's email." So she sent it forward to her. And that's where we're at today. Right? Did I misquote you?
That was the last meeting, right?
Summer, right?
Well, it looks like he can try to place blame anywhere he wants. It doesn't free him up from any responsibilities.
He's responsible for repairing the damage that he did. He made the road 10 times worse. You gotta drive, you drive down there. I'd like to see a fire truck try to come down.
I was down there not too long ago.
You made it 10 times worse.
And I have brush, just huge piles of brush. The water retention area as well.
Could be a little bit of a fire hazard.
Well, I asked Mr. to clean this up. He said, "No, would you want anything else?"
I also drove down there after our last conversation, when the resident came in and spoke. And, you know, I wanted to see what the cones, you know, the construction cones, there are barrels that they were talking about. So I definitely understand their frustration, for sure.
Does he need a front end wiring?
No, I was able to avoid those, but I get it, I understand.
Brendan, just so you know, Tina's here, and I'm sorry, your name?
Take break, good, for a pasturine.
Got it.
So I've met with my attorney. And the first thing that we're going to do is we're doing a title search. Because what appears to have happened is the town has not attached the covenant to the deed. So that right there would be the fault of the town for not doing that. If that is the case, he really can't freely walk clear.
But not if the deed was transferred? You're saying that it was never...
It doesn't look like it was ever attached to it.
To the first deed, or the one of the existing owner? You know what I'm saying?
And that's why we're going to do a title search to see where it dropped off.
Yeah, because that makes a big difference.
Because when I bought my home, we had to, we had to sign off on the covenant. And I believe that you did too. Because when Caesar had sent us all of the information from the public records request, it had all the covenant sign offs for the lots that had been purchased. We didn't see one, lot one. So that's why my attorney's going to do the title search to see where that dropped off. When we figure out where it dropped off, I think that's where we can kind of figure out what our next step is. Because if it just dropped off because they did some side sale, it doesn't absolve him of anything. I don't care if it's expensive or not, you got to finish the road.
No, and that's exactly the way, you're right. Because even if that was applied to the first deed and then they did a quit claim or whatever they did to transfer it again and did not add any note of it, it still exists. It's still tied to it.
Right. And then the fact that he came out there and did work shows that he understands that he is responsible for this. So he's already done something else to kind of say, "Yeah, I own this."
And it was also up to him to do his due diligence to figure out before he took possession of the property. That falls on him. If there's a covenant that applied to the deed before, that sticks and it doesn't matter that he didn't find it or that it wasn't disclosed, that's...
So it's going to be, you know, my attorney's working on that. First thing's the title, and then we'll decide where we're going to go from there. After he does that, he's going to speak with town council. So we can either do it several ways. We can either go to the town and say, "Listen, you never attached this," which would be option one, which I don't think is what happened. Because it was all, it was on all of our deeds.
Yeah, so most likely it was in the attorney's firm.
Right, the second thing is, we could probably ask the town to put it on the special election next and request the town help him out. As a taxpayer, I don't love that, but I don't know what else to do because it's gone on for 15 years.
Doesn't the town have the $300,000 for road repair?
All right, but yeah, I don't know about what the fundage is for that, but that is something. I know we talked about it before, and you think if, you know what I mean? If the road is that close and everybody chips in, there is a good chance it does get passed, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and we just got that Massachusetts road funding. I know that that was a capital improvement thing. You know, different avenues to definitely bring it up to par. We're probably not going to get all the stuff that's on the covenant. Just want a finished road that we don't have to swallow them down.
Well, for resale as well, because now we're going to get into tighter mortgage restraints again, and they're going to be looking whether or not the road is public.
So the last conversation we had with the developer, Mr. Paquette, right? He came in and he was asking for, he was asking for permission to move from three layers, and I'm using language terms, right? To go from, to remove the second layer of the three layers that, because he didn't find as though that was necessary. And it would also reduce the cost, which would then lead to him being able to finish the road. And then there was also a couple of pieces of information or to-dos on the checklist to check off. And we were going to cross-reference it with the engineers. And now all of a sudden, it's, well, it's the town's fault and they're creating extra work and we shouldn't be on the hook for it. It's like, well, what happens three meetings ago when they were like, "Yeah, I'll do the road, I just don't want to do that extra layer that's not needed."
Well, I think part of it...
Or did I hear that wrong?
I think part of it, Brendan, is because for some odd reason all of the records had gone missing. I purchased the records myself from Land Planning and sent them over to the board. And when I did that, it came to light how much work was actually supposed to have been included in the covenant. And that was information that he was never told or given, which I think is whoever sold it to him's fault. But again, he couldn't come down to town hall and find them because they were missing.
Got it, understood.
So I think, I don't think any of us have a problem going from two lifts to three lifts to two lifts because I think that's pretty standard in the town as far as roadwork. It's just, we'd like to have the sidewalk, we're supposed to have, like to have the water retention area at the proper grade. Because when I was reading through some of the meeting minutes, it isn't graded as it's supposed to be. It is steeper than it should be. I think it's supposed to be a three to one, and I think right now it's not. So it is pretty steep.
Yeah, well, and that'll, that'll show on the asphalt too. We'd be able to tell if that was built incorrectly.
So it just seems like they kind of threw it up. And that's what we're stuck with 15 years.
So do we have to look at that all summer, or is that something I can do?
I'm thinking that's going to probably be there.
I think we'll get it for several more years to...
So is there a reason why I pay excise tax to this town?
What about the excise tax?
Why do I pay excise tax?
Oh, I'm against that personally, but we don't, here, we don't, we don't deal with it. I don't like it either, but that's really not here.
It's the state.
The state mandate, that it has nothing to do, our streets are private street. So it's nothing, they can't do anything about it until we figure out with the lawyer who's responsible for this.
I know this would be a complete waste of time, go on. Thank you.
Well, I mean, you guys know where we're at, if you know what I mean.
I know where we're at, I'm frustrated, I just wanted to show up just to make sure, like, I know where we're at. We've taken a step backwards, again, letting you know where I'm at. I've spoken with an attorney, we're trying to figure out some different ways to go about this, whether, you know, whether being the attorney gets help from the town, the attorney shows us how we can make this man responsible for it. Because the way that it was kind of passed off a couple of different ways...
Well, he shouldn't be able to sell this now without completing the road.
Well, it wasn't supposed, it was sold in 2017, and then it was sold again. But I think they did probably just do a quit claim deed. Because the covenant has a 24-month requirement that the road has to be finished within 24 months. The problem here is the town never enforced that.
Who was the closing attorney on that, do you know?
That's what my attorney's looking at, to try and find all these things out. Because it seems like this, when 1217, 17, is recorded at the registry of deeds. It is recorded with the actual farm new estates written into it. But that, that was not him, that was Kamau, that was Kamau. And he passed it off to Paquette. So we're trying to follow the trail right now.
Right.
So I'm trying to help that guys at the same time, like I've been doing for years and years and years.
So this lot shouldn't have been conveyed to anybody without the road being done.
Correct.
I don't understand, I'm a new guy, sorry, but I don't understand how it could possibly be the responsibility of the town to convey...
It's 100% not. So what happens is, so once it, once the original thing gets recorded and that's part of our original approval, that's it.
And not all building permits subject to compliance with the...
Sign on.
Yes, so that's how the other...
Whether you're building a house or a shed or a road.
That's how the other lots were able to get through.
But the problem is now he's saying to us, "Well, I'll just sit on it for 50 years, there's nothing you can do. Your road will fall apart and I'll sit on the lot for 50 years." But that's not how the covenant read. Covenant read that once the lot was sold, you had 24 months to build the home and finish the work. And that's where it's responsible, like the town never held him responsible for that.
So is the lot sold?
Twice, twice.
Yep.
So it has for people to stay in the same...
Same with my family.
Wait, just to be sure, we do, it's twice, this isn't...
It's at least twice.
Okay.
And that's why I have my attorney do the title search to be certain of this.
So who was first?
Goodman.
Goodman.
So Goodman, oh, it's...
All right, now that makes sense.
And he did the development.
He sold it to MA Build for $25,000 in 2017, apparently. And I've heard from Paquette that he bought it for a dollar. But I've also heard from Paquette that he bought it for $5,000. And that was in 2020. So I'm not quite certain where it went from MA Build. I think it's a family thing, I think it's his uncle or something.
I believe I heard something similar.
Something like that.
Which made sense about how it happened, right?
Yeah, so we're trying to follow the bouncing ball and then back up to figure out who's responsible. Because no matter what, our road's falling.
Yep.
Yeah, the road should have been done back, you know, 18 years ago. A lot cheaper, having the same problem in Dealey Way. The guy doesn't, he doesn't want to finish the road because he thinks it's going to cost more to finish the road than the lot's worth.
And unfortunately, these are also situations where...
The thing is, that's...
But we can't, we got to remember that. None of these things are also hardships, right? These are all things that people went into to make money that made money off of the project. So we got to remember that too. The people that aren't finishing the roads are people who've already profited from these things, you know?
Maybe old school or whatnot, but is there a bond that was...
Okay, so that's what's, all right, so that's, no, no, it's a perfect...
It was a really terrible time.
Now we do cash bonds. But back then, a standard across was you'd hold the lot. Now, we all know that it was always the least desirable lot, right? Because, because you'd want to sell all the other ones first.
The bonds always required, I didn't...
No, so, but traditionally...
Yeah, this time, 2007, it was tons of different developments in town did this.
Yeah, oh, yeah, across other towns.
Yeah, they could have a lot in town.
You might say it's crazy now, but it was definitely like the standard practice. But also, if you figure the ratio of the, a value of a lot to road construction was also far different too. So you actually had some equity in the thing and then you had some reason to finish, you know what I mean? So once you've already sold three or four of the houses, that means you've already gotten so far into the road, you've already done so much work, you have so much money into the thing, it's worth it to do the little bit of work to get that extra lot because the lot was worth a lot. But if it's a lot that, say, needs $80,000 worth of site work or something like that, then that value of the lot is, it's not what it's first perceived.
It's all relevant, it doesn't matter, the road should be finished.
Oh, yeah, but I'm just saying about his bond question, that's how it works. We used to do lots, lots were worth so much that it was never in anyone's best interest to not do the lot unless the lot was incredibly desirable.
It was only for a few years that it happened and then the market fell.
And not falling again.
Yeah.
And we're stuck again.
19 new listings came on in Raymond today.
He bought the lot for $5,000, it collapsed.
Well, I heard a dollar, I heard $5,000, and I, like, he said many different things of how much he bought it for. I don't care what he bought it for, I don't care what it cost to finish the road. The covenant says you got to finish the road in 24 months, so we need to... The covenant says you gotta finish the road in 24 months, so we need to find a way to hold his feet to the buyer on this.
How long has he owned the lot?
Two years?
Two, that's what I can't figure out, and that's why we're doing the title search. Because MA Build was 2017, so somewhere between then and now, within the last five years, he's taken possession of it, but we're just not quite sure how, what, when, and for how much. But the covenant does ride along with it, whether you do a quit claim deed or not.
Yeah.
So he has said in this meeting too, I'm just gonna sit on it, I'm just gonna sit on it. He can't. But we just have to, as a town and as residents of the street, figure out how he can't.
So, didn't they have town council look into it, what did they say about it?
They basically were stating that there's nothing that they can really do without looking, I mean, like, what are you gonna do?
Nothing that who can do.
And just so, so, so for the town, like, when, when we hold the lot, when we hold the lot instead of, instead of the bond, we do have the option to go through, take possession of the lot, try to sell the lot and then recoup the money and finish the road. But we know in this situation that that's-
He's been paying his taxes, so you have a very hard time doing that.
Yeah, 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 but I'm just saying, that's technically, that's, that's the, that's the root. But it just, it doesn't really work and it wouldn't make financial sense in this thing. We'd be better off having the town accept the road and saying, hey, we're all gonna chip in, we're gonna finish the road.
Okay, so then, just my own clarification, sorry, new guy.
Yeah, sorry.
It's all just a lot of process.
Bottom line, when he, when he took out the original application for this, did he in fact, whether it was Kamo or Peket or whoever, did they conform to the requirements that were set up at the, at the time that he?
At the time, he did everything right up until-
And then until he changed hands and all that kind of other things.
Yeah, so right up until it got to the point where you had to finish the road completely to get the lot. He did it.
He's perked it, he's got it, he's got his-
So then bottom line is, he's complied with all the requirements that the, that the planning board had set forth, what was it, nine?
Except for the timeline.
And the bond, because he needed the bond. The town was not gonna allow him to do building from it without a bond. But I think it's fine.
It was only a couple of years that we did this, like, I think Dealey Way, pasture, they all came in during that same time period.
But I think we were holding lots all the way back in like the eighties.
Really? That's the first I ever heard of it, and I've heard about this pasture lately, two years ago, when they paid one, you know?
I've never heard of it, I always thought it was a law.
It was always like a performance law.
Because that's what it's been since.
A performance law, and I've heard the same thing, Hanover, just a buddy of mine, the same thing happened and the contractor, the developer said, yeah, take the bond. It's cheaper for me to pass the bond off and, and they ended up repairing the granite and all that stuff themselves, but, but nevertheless, bottom line, at the time, they did comply with what was set forth.
And that's in the problem, right?
I don't understand the town's, then I'm missing it.
It's not gonna hold up.
Other than, other than trying to enforce it to help the current residents, that's, that's where-
It is causing a hardship for us as far as our property values. Because I, like, I tried to sell a house in the street a few years ago and so many people, what's going on with the street? What's going on the street? Why is there cones everywhere? And like Amy said, where they're tightening up restrictions, if someone decides they wanna sell their home on the street.
A VA loan wouldn't allow them to buy on that.
So it is becoming a hardship for the, for the residents, especially now that we have a huge buyer hasn't there.
Yeah.
So I can report back to my attorney by-
So on that, with the brush-
It would help and you know that, because-
Can you step in on that?
What's that?
With all the brush everywhere?
Who put the brush there?
Because it's gonna be dried and like a Christmas tree goes up, right?
So he cleared out the entire water basin part and he took all of the trees and stuck them up on the curb. So we have a giant 20-foot pile of trees.
That's, that's a fire.
Yeah, and then just never tracked them out of there.
Yeah.
And to close, we don't know-
And this was a developer that did that?
This was the developer that was done maybe three months ago.
How long ago has this been going on?
About three months ago, he put the trees there, he dug that out.
This has been a debacle for a few, ever since I've been on the planning board.
Yeah, since I've been on the-
Since you've been on the planning board.
So why is he being so hard, what is he expecting?
But this started when I got on, right?
He's taking the money and the-
I think so, because I think-
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, because it, but it, it's been a problem, but it was kinda idle, right? Because nobody was doing anything, the other guy didn't own it yet and it just sat.
So I think the way, we have to figure out, how can we make him?
Yeah.
So between my attorney and the town's attorney, how can we make him?
Like Mark was saying, from day one, it doesn't, you know, it's always been on, it's been incumbent on that lot since day one. How could it go away?
It doesn't, like I said, and you don't, when you transfer things like that, especially like a quit claim, what that says, the quit claim is saying, you are taking all of my interest in this property. Regardless of what it is, if you're not naming, you're just saying, all of my interest. If that interest includes the covenant, you get it. But in a quit claim deed, it, it's less descriptive, it's just saying everything, all of my interest.
And I think that's why he thinks he's off the hook and he can just sit on it and not build it. And we need to push him. But that's why I've got to listen to my attorney to figure out what the best way to go about pushing him is. Whether it's through the town, whether it's personally.
And to have him say something like, we've tried to get an agreement with the town for over two years and have met with roadblocks, I would think from your-
He's not wrong in saying that, because I would say the same thing, where all the paperwork disappeared, that's kind of a roadblock.
Roadblock, do, all right, so you don't think that we were kinda lenient with him when he was in here?
Or you were lenient in some parts?
Right, trying to get it done? We certainly were not trying to stand in his way.
No, but the fact that no one here could provide any-
That's his responsibility, that's his, not, no, 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 no. When, when he bought that piece of-
But it's gone.
When he bought that piece of property, that's his responsibility, I don't understand.
He had access to the office, that right?
And he knows.
It's not the planning board, you mean?
No, that's not the planning board's responsibility to let that guy know what his responsibilities are, that's not us.
Well, when he asks for it.
It's not us, I mean-
That's not us, that's not us.
What does that town council say?
Yeah, that's what he's saying, like, that's, his responsibility is the, is the body.
And, and I, like, I see both sides, you know, it's like, I think that he expected to come to the town. And just like I do with a lot of my work, I go to the town to try and figure stuff out. That's where you expect to find your information. You don't wanna go to the registry, but you know you can and you have to.
Yeah, but when it's your stuff and your responsibility, that's yours. Like, you can't really expect, like, the volunteer board to do the stuff that an attorney is supposed to be doing. If you know what I'm saying, we try to help people, but I don't do legal work for people, and that's legal work.
Right.
A hundred percent.
Mind you, to piggy, to piggyback off of what Mark is saying, right? And I think what everybody's having the same conversation, we're just having it from five different angles, is the, the planning, the planning board is a volunteer position that rotates one member every five years, right, potentially. So at the end of the day, and Bert, you keep using my new guy line, I don't know, man, that's my line, don't take that for granted.
You're the old guy now.
Well, you're not the new guy anymore.
I understand, what I'm trying to get at is, I understand the frustration of the residents. And I understand, and I, it sounded like the resident that was there before, because I can't hear him anymore, so they must have got up and left. But this frustration, but is there a difference about yelling two up? Misunderstanding about what the planning board's goal is? Because to Mark's point, if that guy bought that, he inherited everything that went with it. And what is the planning board supposed to do? What is our jurisdiction to get this through, other than to hear what everybody's saying and follow the bylaws?
I just think he's-
And at the end of the day, the, the covenant wasn't attached, how is that anything that the planning board can do?
I just think he was expecting some paperwork in here, that's all.
What we need to do is figure out what the best solution is to get the roads completed.
Yeah.
But I don't think going to the taxpayers of the town and saying, hey, you already pay a thousand dollars a month in tax and, and, you know, property taxes and estate taxes or asset taxes. Hey, throw in something else because the developer doesn't feel like finishing the job that he signed up to when he bought the development and when bought the lot.
No, but, but we're not, we're asking if they want to, I think that's a big difference. We're not telling anybody that they should chip in, we're asking people if they would like to.
We've done that before.
There's a big difference in my mind.
This is all dependent upon what my attorney is able to find out. Because if I can find stuff out that helps you guys chase him, fantastic, we can go at it with two different, you know?
But is that, is the planning board's responsibility to chase this guy?
That's the point, right there. Is it, within the planning board's jurisdiction or responsibility to chase this guy down, to say, hey, you gotta finish a road for, call it a hundred, so you can go and sell a lot for a hundred thousand with the wash? If I'm, not for nothing, if I'm the guy, no, you know, no, no offense to anybody, but if I'm the guy trying to make money or whatever, that's a wash to me, I'm gonna let it sit as well. So I, I guess I understand, it doesn't make it right. But if he's not following the rules of the original covenant, which he inherited, then he has to do that by law. But I don't think that's the planning board's position to enforce that law.
No, I'm right, it's the town council's position.
But it's not our job to enforce it.
No, because also if we do go the route of taking the responsibility, then we're not getting to ask the town if they wanna chip in. Because the second we take possession of it, we are responsible a hundred percent to do all of that work. So the second we take it-
Because we should have owned the lot?
Yeah, if we take the lot, we also own the responsibility of the road. And at that point, you're not asking the people in town, you're telling them they're paying for it.
So what kind of dollars would the lot's worth and what's cost to finish the road, is it pretty much?
It, it's gotta be less, right? So we already know that the cost of, the cost of the road is less than the profit of building the house.
What he told me the last time I spoke with him was the cost to finish the road, which is estimated with our rate, a hundred and fifty thousand the last time, has increased by about 30%, which I'm sure we can all understand, because building costs and, you know, tar and everything else has gone up, so now you're looking at probably close to 200,000. And being in the line of work that I am, 225,000 to build 2,000 square foot house and sell it at 550 is kind of break even. So he would be very close to break even, but he wouldn't be profiting like he'd like to.
And that's-
But he still would be profiting and getting something off of his plate. So in my eyes, like, I, I hear you, Brendan, on the like, but even if it was a wash, I would feel better about clearing something off of my plate because I've signed to do something.
You would, yeah, hold on, you would feel better in, and I'm not defending anybody, I wanna make it very clear for the minute, I'm not trying to defend anybody or this or that or anybody like that. What I'm saying though is, Amy, is, is, it's not about the dollar value wash, it's about the time value of money, right? So the time it would take to put the resources into that for a wash, where he could go and do something else and make 150,000 profit in his brain of saying, why would I do that when I'm not on the hook for that? It was never attached to the thing. I don't care if the town hall lost the covenant or not, that's on them, it's not on me, it's a wash, sorry guys, it is what it is.
Because if I was gonna make $50,000, it would be a headache I wouldn't have to carry with me for the rest of, until I, until Mark, it comes up again.
What does that have to do with the town?
We have to agree, right? We have to agree that right now, it's not profitable, right?
We should just do it.
I think we can agree with that. It's not profitable, otherwise he would be doing it. No, no, but we agree, right?
Because the covenant doesn't say if you're-
Oh, no, no, I agree with you, a hundred percent.
If he did do the road right now, right now, like, right now, and got the house built by the end of this, it's, it's a risk, but,
Not profitable.
Means houses and house, a bridge was like $700,000, so I don't agree with the 550 number unless we continue to go up.
Listen, I don't think it's fair, but I think we're fighting a losing battle by even having this conversation of, what he should just do is even if it's a wash. No business person in their right mind would make that decision as much as it's hurting the residents on that development. And I think that that's the unrealistic expectation to have a business owner or developer to, to use that as the argument. I don't think the argument is, it's a wash, wipe out the headache. Because to him, it might not be a headache, or to anybody that is more realistic.
If you're willing to dollar or five thousand for a lot, it's most good off his nose, for that, okay?
I don't, and I don't necessarily, I don't think it's the planning board's responsibility, but I think it certainly is town council's responsibility to hold the covenant. Because you wrote a covenant, it's a binding contract.
So then, we'll, we'll confer with town council, right? Do you agree?
Yeah, I should think so, because the covenant isn't under agreement with the town. I personally, my, my two cents, I think it's a civil matter. You know, it's something between the, I know that's not what you wanna hear, but I think it's between the neighborhood and the contract. As far as that go, if he didn't fulfill his obligations, then that should be going in front of a judge. And have a, have a civil cell, a civil court settlement and have a judge rule on it.
I might agree with you on that.
I don't think it's the responsibility of, of the town.
I, I, I think it's one step further, Bert, if you don't mind, is I think it's, I think obviously having the civil matter be what trumps it up. But I think because the town was originally supposed to attach the covenant and what's being said is that it wasn't, it may leave a little bit of liability on the town, but I don't think it's something that the planning board can do. As you can tell, I mean, for at least the year that I've been on the planning board, this has been on the agenda. You know, I constantly see moving forward, three meetings or four meetings, you know? And now it seems like we're back at square one, I think it's town council. And just say, listen guys, I hate residents, so they can stop coming in and yelling at us, like, we've got something to do with it. I don't mean, obviously, I don't mean, you know, I don't mean that. I mean, some residents that want to come in and yell at us, like, we have some kind of power over this guy and we can put a lane against his house until he finishes the, the road, we can't. So I think we have to pass it off to town council and say, this has, something has to be done or at least guide us in the direction of what the next spot is, so we can give the residents some kind of light at the end of the tunnel that's not a train, within the next 15 years.
When we start talking to town council about this, when he was saying he was gonna do the road, right? Because I mean, we've been getting developments and now all of a sudden, here we are again. It's like we roll forward and then there's like, Joe, come on.
So I think now maybe as a resident, I'm asking, can you guys please, someone, confer with town council and ask him how he can back this up and make this guy do it? And I'm doing the same on my side and we'll get together and try and figure it out. Because the covenant is through the town, it's not, I didn't buy into an HOA. I'm not su, I'm not gonna personally sue the guy, because the town-
But can, can I say, can I say something crazy, right? You keep saying that it exists and you had to sign off on it, right?
Yeah.
So that means the town did it, right, and they attached it.
On my lot, those five lots.
Yeah, right, so it's attached.
The other lot is what I'm trying to figure out and that's why I'm doing a title search through my attorney, to figure out how this got drawn.
So, all right, so before you bought your property, there was no deed for that property, right? The deed was for the entire piece before it was subdivided, right? So in order for that covenant to have ever existed, it would have had to have existed before you bought your house.
It started in 2003.
Therefore, without a doubt, based off of that, the town, 100%, no, not, we know this, attached the covenant. Right?
Why did, right?
Because she had to sign it.
So then how come town council hasn't pushed the fact that this gentleman had a 24-month grace period? That's, so that's town council now.
That, that, that very well could be. But if you saying that you signed the thing, then the town put a covenant on that property and that's no longer a question.
Which is great, and I just wanna make sure through my attorney, because where, when everything disappeared, we were having trouble finding to see if it actually-
But we know it exists, is what I'm saying.
I do know it exists because I, I bought it from Land Planning.
So there's clearly like no fault on the town as far as applying the covenant. We may not have enforced, but it was certainly applied.
Which is great, but now we're at the enforcement stage.
Yep.
Listen, Mark, and, and to everybody involved, I think, I think we gotta kick it over to town council. I think we've exhausted our limitations, uh, up till our limitations on this.
What would your question to town council be?
Well, we stopped talking to town council when we again got progress, so we really-
Yeah, because it seemed like things were going good and we didn't pursue, I-
It seems like it was finally gonna happen.
Numerous letters, these gentlemen.
But what would, I'm just saying, when we, whenever we deal with council, it's always good to think about it and we wanna fire off actual questions to give them guidance and, you know what I mean? We don't wanna give open things, that's not how you ask a lawyer a question. So like, what would-
So my, my thought, my thought on that, Mark, would be this, right? Is based off the information that's been provided by the residents and their belief, very strong belief and evidence that they had the time to covenant in order for their property to pass.
This is what I'm thinking.
It believes that a covenant was not attached to this, this specific property, right?
But it was.
And the developer is, is not agreeing, this new developer is not agreeing to finish the road, which is part of the covenant in the development, right? So now we're at a standstill, what's our next move? For the best interests of all parties, I mean, what, what is it exactly that we can do? And if it's out of our hands, who do we send it to?
But we are, but-
Who places it on?
But we do know the answer to that question. The answer to the question is take possession of the lot. Right, there's no question there, that is the answer to your question, is how, yes. How do we enforce it? We take possession of the lot.
But how can you do that if he's paying his taxes? But how can you do that if he's paying his taxes? Is it because he had the covenant?
Because he broke, because he broke.
It's a law.
He broke his agreement with the town. If he's claiming that he's not gonna do the work, then we can stop the process. And, and, and that, that's our, that's our recourse, 100%.
But that's based off a covenant that, that has since disappeared.
But it already, no, the covenant exists, those things don't-
Create the file that's-
Just because that dude never found it and has, and claims he doesn't see it, doesn't, doesn't mean anything. We already know it exists, because it's been signed off by other residents of the area.
I, I'd like to commend to the vice chairman here that i- if you want in a form of a motion, that, uh, town council, uh, be contacted to determine the liability of the town slash the planning board in regards to the, uh,
Enforcement of the covenant?
Enforcement of, of, and determine our liability. I, I think that's what, Mark's, and, and Brendan going back, well, there is, there isn't, there is, there isn't liability wise. I think, let's see what our liability is. Because we could be talking and trying to determine things. And like you said, as best we can, to, to help them out would, would be awesome. But in the same breath too, I, I think our liability has to be clear.
Would you, yeah, but the only liability we would have would be against someone coming against us for not enforcing.
And I think town council should, would be able to determine that.
So we-
Oh, should be, too.
And that's, that's, if that is delivering all the information to Congress, now that we've got new correspondence from the developer, and saying, based off this new information of what he's claiming why he's not gonna finish, to, to Bert's point, whose liability is it now?
Right.
Because every time we put that's your lane on, every time we put that's your lane on our agenda, and the residents show up understandably pissed, and then it's not my problem, then we're gonna talk about this for the next, next a lot of years, and that's not a problem. So I think finding out who's liability is this then, right, right? Let's authorize this move for everybody's sake, including the residents, whose name is it?
Okay, so Bert has a motion, I would, I would like to say that, um, we, we send this latest info, um, email to town council with your motion. Do you want to add that to your motion?
The only kicker is that, can I do the motion where I haven't been part of this?
Yes.
Are you gonna show, alright, so I'm not, I would like to make a motion.
Wait, hold on, hold on. Have you been signed in? You signed in down there? You got your card?
Yes.
Alright, you're a-
I'm a card carrier.
It's official then.
Actually, don't worry, the P checks start coming in like now, so you're good.
The headaches start right away?
So then through the, through the, I would like to make a motion then that we, uh, contact, uh, town council. Do we, do we need permission now? Do we have to go, do we, we can go ourselves, okay, just to make sure?
Yeah, we do need permission, we do need permission to contact.
I think so.
I think that, I thought that was the new thing.
I want to make sure that we have a, a solid question.
I thought the new one wanted it had, it had to go through.
We have to fill out kind of like an application to-
Okay, well, we'll ask the Slackman, we'll ask the Slackman.
It has to be, go through the board's level.
So based on the information-
So we'll put that on the June 14th agenda for the Slackman.
Based on the information provided and discussed during tonight's meeting, that town council be, uh, uh, notified as to determine, determining the liability of the town and the, and the planning board in order to, uh, address the situation.
With this, with this new email.
So there, so there is a motion on the floor.
We don't want to do his lead, we'll work for him.
Yeah, can we get a second on that motion?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Who's voting?
All of us.
Aye.
Aye. So it passes five to zero?
You're not?
No, alright, so we're asking for, to see what-
Determine liability.
The planning board's liability to enforce, okay.
No, no, just the liability, not to enforce, just the liability.
Alright, I agree with that.
Does this get me as a resident anywhere? This feels like, I feel like it kind of gets you guys either off hook or not off hook.
I think he'll give us direction based on it.
Okay.
So you have five?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
That's five.
So if he's in violation of the covenant, it's been over two years, so the town could go forward and just take the lot?
If, if the guy's abandoning the lot based off of this, yes. If the guy's saying that he's not going forward and he's not doing anything, I'm pretty sure we can go forward, and that's all we need.
I wouldn't be surprised to hear that.
But that would be a lengthy process, and it would cost us a lot of money, too.
Right, yeah, so, so I hope that you understand too, that like, I knew all of this, like-
And then it will be stopped with it, which will cost us even more money.
It costs us a worse lot than that.
Land, land work size.
Yeah, so even though it looked like we did nothing in the last few years, it was in the best interest to like pursue with that, you know what I mean? Like, it stinks and it didn't work out, but like, I really do think it was best if somebody, if that guy just did it. So like, it was worth working, it just stinks that it didn't work out.
If I remember correctly, but I'm hoping for this, this is why the-
We're gonna take a five minute recess.
That I've been like-
verbally voiced what we think the developer is doing, um, just for our own livelihood purposes.
Agreed.
We just, we can all, we can all see it from our angles if it were us, but it's not us. So I just, coming from the fact that everything is recorded and everything moved out a minute, I just want to be careful not to say, well, this is why he is, or this is why he is. What we know is that he wrote us a letter or an email saying that he's not wanting, it, that's personal, so now we just go capital. But that's really, that's the problem.
Is there any way that you guys can check with the fire department too, about that huge fire pile? I don't know who-
I would be glad, I would be glad to contact the fire, yes.
I can call the chief, he's still, he's safe, okay.
Yeah.
Who's the acting chief right now?
Kuzo.
Jason Deere?
Kuzo.
He just left.
Captain Kuzo.
It's not him, it's-
I thought he was acting.
I'd be happy to, like, it would have made sense to just send it to Kendra and ask her to give it to the right person?
Yeah.
Because she's always very good at passing stuff where it needs to go.
I would do that.
Just because it's just such a huge pile, and we're not, we're in a very dry season.
Yeah. I would do that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Alright, moving on, everybody good? Alright, we have bills to pay, we have, um, a bill for WB Mason. Planning board expense 01175, invoice number 228664210, in the amount of $49.61.
Make a motion to pay invoice number 228664210, in the amount of 49.61.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to sign that?
Yeah, might as well.
We have, um, meeting minutes, um, April 21st, 2022. Everybody alright with this? Um, the voting, um, the voters on this one are, um, Amy, Brendan, and Mark, and Rick. Oh, Rick was absent, sorry. So-
That's a lot of minutes. That's a lot of minutes, does it?
No, but you think this is easy?
It was the hearings, the hearings of our Batum. Brendan, do you have the minutes in front of you? For April 21st, 2022?
I have the email, yep.
Okay. So it's you, myself, and Mark?
So do you want me to make the motion that we set the minutes as right?
Please? I mean, if that's how you feel, I don't want to tell you to-
Yeah, I would love to make a, I would love to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, that we set the minutes as right.
Alright. Second?
I'll second though.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we have meeting minutes for May 5th, 2022. We have, um, myself, Brendan, and Rick. Looking for a motion to-
So make a motion to set the minutes for May 5th?
Okay. You have a second?
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brendan wasn't there that one.
Oh, am I doing it wrong?
So on May 5th-
Gordon, you and me.
Oh, so then, oh, sorry, Brendan. I read, I read that wrong, I read that wrong. Um, okay.
You can back my motion.
Okay. So I guess we're just gonna have to do with it, as we will, I'll make, I'll, you want a motion and we'll just do this?
Yeah, we'll make a motion, we, you know-
Hey, you still got a majority.
Wouldn't you guys agree, right? Alright.
As long as you agree with each other.
Yep. Alright, um, I'll second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
So, moving on to Walmart. Shall I just read this into record, or what do you guys think? Basically, they're just, they want to update the lighting. Um, so I, I'll read it into record. Um, so Rayleigh Railsback from Walmart emailed us on May 24th and said, "Good afternoon, our client would like to add one new light pole and lighting in the parking area for their existing online grocery pickup for service, um, at Walmart 2128, located at 295 Plymouth Street in Halifax. The new light pole and lighting will connect to existing circuitry connecting, currently being utilized. The existing fire lane and parking la, layout will not be affected. I've researched online and I was unable to see which zone store is located. Does the store being in this location have any requirements or restrictions for pole height or number of lumens? We want the area to be as safe as possible, but also comply with any requirements the city may have. Please, please let me know if you have any questions." So Joanne, let them know that we might discuss it tonight and that, um, maybe get them on the June 16th meeting, is that what I'm reading here?
No, they didn't respond to the last email.
Okay, and you sent that, oh wow, May 25th.
I can send it to, I can send another to them, yes.
Okay. I don't know, it's my thought process that we should just make sure that they're not gonna go out of the bounds of the, um, parking lot or the property as any of the lights in any other areas that we, uh, have would do.
I know many, are you open for discussion?
Oh, always, don't be sorry, I'm pretty casual.
If, uh, I know many years ago when Walmart first came out, the neighbors were quite concerned with some of the abutters if the lighting was shielded. So, uh, I do know on that side, it's pretty much just the stop and shop is on that side where the pickup is.
Yeah.
But I don't know towards 106 to, uh, if the, the lighting itself was shielded. I don't recall, uh, any maximum or minimum on the lumens or, or anything like that. But, uh, I do know they've been having some security problems over there. They've had, uh, two break-ins on the, on the side over there. You know, if you go around the corner, they have a storage area for car batteries. They've been hit twice as far as I've been aware of it. So, uh, but, uh, I don't, I don't think there were many abutters on that side, but it would probably be helpful. The, the only other thing concerned with, on the customer pickup there is, is I know every year they, uh, they use the outside parking lot for outdoor sales. I believe which requires a, a special permit. I don't know, I don't recall Walmart ever coming out and asking for one. It's been kind of a past practice, you know, we do the garden stuff, we do the-
Yeah, and they take up some spots, all the mulch.
But now they have the grocery pickup there, which increases the, not only the pedestrian traffic, but also the car traffic. It, I'm saying maybe an opportunity to address the issue. Originally, they were gonna put it away on the other side, but then they had the car, the car shows and whatnot going on, so it kind of got moved over here. But, uh, just as far as the lighting goes, it, I do recall it was some, a shielding issue to make sure it was shielded.
We would have the requirement that you have to contain the light that you omit. So whether or not it's angling, shading, lamping, but that's, that's a definite.
Can't leave the property, so usually on the site plans, they show us a lighting where, where it goes, and it's like, uh, .5 to zero, like, as it gets over to the side. We did have, just so the air aware, they did come in front of us. I don't know if you were there, but remember when they came in front of us to do all the changes for the-
Yeah, to add the pickup?
Yeah, yeah, you would, I don't remember if you were at that meeting or not.
Yep.
But, um, I think that they should probably come in front of us and at least show a lighting plan. Just be, just to make sure they're shielding it.
It's prob, yeah, it's probably not gonna be an issue, but I think we definitely need something on paper of like-
It could only be helpful, as far as, you know, lighting the place up more.
We don't need anything that shows the, the effect on the entire lot, it's a big thing, but we definitely need something.
Yep, just for that, at least where are you putting it, and then so are we in agreement that they need to come in and show us that.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll cover it when the neighbors come back to you in the future.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I agree. Alright, so we'll have them come in?
Yeah, well, as you can see, I did ask them, I told them the date and told them when they needed to let me know, so I could have it on the agenda, but they-
Maybe it was a vacation.
Could be, could be, so I'll try again.
Would you like that in a form of a motion? Or do, just send a letter off, request?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, just an email, just do that. I mean, like, right, I mean, like, uh, we could do a motion, but- Motion to have Walmart come in, anybody want to do that? For the lighting? Or are we good?
Well, Joanne already, already emailed them about the 16th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just agreeing that they should come in, okay? Alright, so now we have, uh, 12 Sherwood Drive. Um, we have an email from Isabel Samos on the drainage easement at Highland Woods. "Hello, Joanne, here are my questions for the board, thank you in advance for addressing them. One, as stated in my previous emails..." We have previous emails?
They're up, yeah.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna feel like we might need to catch up a little. Has everybody read this? But I feel like the town won't know what we're talking about unless we catch them up, agree?
I have no idea what we're talking about.
Yeah. So on Wednesday, May 18th, Is, Isabel Samos, um, I hope I'm saying the name correctly, emailed us and said, "Hello, my name is Isabel Samos. I own a property at 12 Sherwood Drive. There is a drainage easement on our property that seems to still be unfinished and has been unattended since we closed in 2016. Currently, there is no fence around the easement, and every summer the overgrowth of vegetation becomes worse. The overgrowth does not allow the water to drain properly after heavy rainfall, and with no fence in place, it's quite dangerous. According to the meeting minutes attached below," and there's a few links that you can see there, um, the last pages. Um, "According to the meeting minutes attached below, Ed Johnson is responsible for, responsible for completing the work on this easement. Is there a plan in place on when he will be required to follow through with this? Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I look forward to your response." Again, I will, um, say the meeting minutes are from August 16th, 2018, and September 20th, 2018. Joanne replied and said that she can get us in for tonight, or get them in for tonight, and that's when she sent, um, pictures, um-
Pictures of trees.
Yeah.
Well, of course we want retention, so-
Yeah, the trees, treated like water.
Yeah, so I don't know where they have video in from, but there's pictures.
I, I like have several friends on Sherwood, so they get cut off.
It, it doesn't show that they're like in the easement or anything, unfortunately. I assume they are.
I think that's cut off.
Right, like, she probably wanted to show-
Yeah, so like, I'm not sure, but it really dropped and picking them up. And down at the bottom, and the trees are kind of like they were in ours, starting to grow up.
Okay. So Isabel's questions from, uh, May 25th are, "As stated in my previous emails, which is where I left off before, my husband and I own the property at 12 Sherwood Drive. According to the meeting minutes that she already mentioned in the last email, the drainage easement is unfinished. Ed Johnson, Ed Johnson is responsible for completing the work. Is there a plan or deadline for him to finish the work on this easement? Two, should there be a fence around the easement for safety? This leads me to my third question. Three, starting in early spring, the overgrowth of vegetation prevents the water from draining properly. After even one day of steady rainfall, the easement comes very close to overflowing and takes days to drain. This is a concern because as of now, there is nothing stopping small children, pets, or wildlife from falling in. Our second concern is the possibility of the overflow eroding our driveway over time. Is there a plan for the town to maintain the easement after completion?" Okay. So, you were here on 18th. What do you remember?
So, there's gotta, the thing is, is it's got, this is already approved. This is already approved and accepted.
Detention?
So, this already been.
Bleach, that, that doesn't have an overflow?
I'm pretty sure that this would already be approved, which means it already had an ASBIL and was accepted by the town, which means the town should be currently the responsible party for clearing the detention. As far as the fence, we can double check. The original subdivision might even be before I was on the board, but there may not be, a lot of times there isn't a fence required, depending on what the slope is. And the concern about the, the open water, there's, whatever the drainage report and whatever they had, that might be how it works. It may hold water for a certain amount of time. You have to check to see if that's actually a thing.
So, I think we should probably get the file.
Are you guys reading the minutes?
No.
Cause I, I, like, I know these people. The minutes say that Ed Johnson was supposed to go out there and fix it.
But that would have been prior to the town accepting the road.
You gotta be.
Can I, can I ask you a question? And this isn't, it's on topic, but it's, it's a question. So, do I need to refuse myself because they're in my development?
No.
No, you're not on the same street.
All right, just making sure. They're like, it's.
It's not even the same building.
For me, it's in development, so my neighbors, I mean, I'll need to refuse myself.
Long as you love them three hundred feet.
I don't.
I don't see how you're affected by this.
Yeah.
If you're with.
Good question.
You have no conflict, I can see.
Good question. Do you think you're over 300 feet from there? That would be two house lots.
I just Googled it, like I just did maps. It, it's across the street and then behind the people across the street from me. But as long as I'm, I just wanna make sure I'm not in violation of.
I mean, and Jason's backyard is 300 feet.
If he's not in a, if he's not in a.
I think you're already.
You're okay. I think you're over 300 feet away.
Just making sure.
No. Good question.
But I think we can certainly get the file. If, if the, if the road's accepted, and like I said, the minutes, the minutes might reflect that Ed Johnson, he would have been responsible the entire time until the town took possession of the road.
The town was holding a bond on it.
Was.
It wasn't to be released until he finished it. And nobody's been there or something.
That's what I'm saying. If, if the road is approved, then it's the town. If not, then he would still be responsible.
How is that retention upon the responsibility of the town?
So, there's a maintenance schedule that would come with every drainage easement and things like that. And there's a maintenance schedule and it says, you know, a lot of times they're not too specific, just in the spring you'll clear it, in the fall, and you're not allowed to have any obstruction. So, that's one of the responsibilities that the town takes on when they accept those roads. That's why we gotta be careful on how we.
Let's be careful.
Cause we own them after.
We need to do research here. We need to make sure that the road has been released.
Yeah.
We have to. We have to see the file, right? And then look it over and make sure that everything is as, and then make a decision. So, I think that we need to, we don't have the file.
The maintenance schedule is on that.
I think we should read the minutes from those meetings.
She's called the Highway Department three different times. And I suggested to her that she bring it up to you guys because the plan had been with the planning board at one point, so you'd at least be able to do some research for her.
So, we're gonna do research and put it on the next agenda and I'll go in personally.
She works on Thursday, so she's actually can't come up to any of the meetings.
Okay, well, we'll at least be able to do something with it.
Yeah, I forwarded you the part email so you can see the attachments for the meeting minutes.
Yes. Awesome. Yeah, I just meant I couldn't pull them up here. Yeah, right now.
In, you know, as far as the concern of, of open water and, you know, the, the safety of children's, pets, wildlife and whatnot. Again, depending once we see the thing.
The fence is.
It's right at the edge of the drive.
Probably.
Most of the, most of the fences that, that are on there aren't, we, there may be a chain like one in the back of like Cranberry Drive, but typically we absolutely.
There is one back there.
Yeah, usually it's, they're actually, it's just a small, almost decorative fence or one closer to a God rail, if you would. A lot of them are actually made to keep a car out of it, not a person. Usually there's, it's, it's similar to a lake. You wouldn't say that a lake, you know, would have to be fenced in because it poses a threat to everyone around it.
But no, I agree with you. But it depends on like the ratio of.
Yeah, so if it drops off too great, then they would have a protective.
Just like stairs, yeah. Okay.
Hey, I can walk over there and take pictures if you want.
Oh, we got some.
We have plenty of trees. Yep. Would you like that in the form of a motion?
I think we should. I don't really think we need a motion to do the research on it, you know? I think we should just put it on the next agenda and, and basically just do the research, read the minutes and be up to speed on what we're gonna be talking about.
And see in fact if they complied with the requirements of the original, so.
See if the.
You know, as far as rate of drainage and all that fun stuff.
Like I said, it may be, and like I said, the fence, there may not have been a fence required. So, we can check out all that stuff.
Cool.
So, including whether or not the road was taken. Or if not taken, but accepted. And then we have reorganization of the board. Decision letters for, oh, we should do the decision letters. Where are those? Has everybody read the River Street one? Rick, Mark?
I have not.
Yeah, for the approval, put it up here.
And who is that? I've read the River Street one. I think that it was nothing. Does it say, oh, I think it's by, I don't know. I always like that one.
That's trouble in the back row, isn't it?
Yep.
It's trouble in the back row, isn't it?
Okay, just make sure.
You watch out for what goes.
Does that look like a sign?
Yep. Yeah, it's got all the stuff.
Ricky read the one on River Street. Brendan, did you read the letter on River Street? You're okay with that? The River Street decision?
Hold on, coming off of you, yes, yep.
And then we, what about the Halifax cigar and smoke? That was the sign with the backlit?
Yep. Yeah, we discussed that in person. Mark, did we discuss that it was okay to move forward on it?
Yes.
But I'm just making sure that the letter, that you, like, that you, you're okay with the letter.
Uh, I don't think I saw that letter. Uh, no, we are good, we're next to, we're, I'm sorry.
So, it's the, it's the decision letter. Just making sure that everybody is okay with them. I like, I, I think that's important to make sure that the letter includes everything that we talked about during the meeting, so I'm just going over it.
Well, if the letter does in fact have everything that we discussed in that meeting, which, if you guys could help me out on that, if it does, then I'm good with it.
I thought, I thought it did. I thought it did, but I didn't wanna be the only one deciding.
Mark?
He's reading.
Yeah, just finishing. Yep, no, I, I think, I think that's, that was the important part is that it is that the special permit is not required due to updated technology. Yep.
So, you agree? Okay. Should I motion that we sign? Can I get a motion to assign this one?
Do you need a motion?
Well, I'm just thinking that, I'm just covering it. I didn't do it on the last one, but I'm just trying to think that I probably lacked on it. It's my first time sitting right here and probably the last, but that's okay.
If I wasn't here or I zoomed, I don't remember.
I'd make a motion that we accept the letter as it was written for signing.
Except for signing? Okay, all right, gotcha. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark.
Okay, now we are on to reorganization of the board.
And before we do, I'd just like to, at this point, I'd like to welcome Bert to the board.
Thank you.
I'd also like to ask Joanne if you could send a letter to Gordon thanking him for the time and effort and everything over the years.
Yep, absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, who wants it?
Well, last time I tried to make it easy. I'm gonna do it again. I make a motion to. Make a motion to appoint myself as chairman, to appoint Amy as vice chairman, and to appoint Rick as clerk.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm the clerk again?
You get to do all the paperwork.
Joanne, don't, don't miss any meetings, okay?
I'll tell you what, I'm no longer the clerk or the new guy. This is awesome.
Dude, that is the best spot to be in.
Thank you, Mark. I'll give you that hundred bucks when I do it.
You got it.
I thought you were the new guy and I was the new, new guy.
Oh, right, right, right. Wait, wait, I can, I'm in.
And now we have the Plymouth County Registry Deeds signatures that we're just gonna sign. So, Brendan, this week you'll have to come in and sign, or, or next week you'll have to come in and sign for these and some of the plans that are up. River Street and, what, what's the other one, Joanne?
It's a garden slope. They need River Street, that's one, and just the other way around. And then we need all the plans to be signed.
Project.
The Country Club Estates thing is still going on, huh?
They haven't met.
Yeah, so I thought, I just assumed that it went away.
Bert, you would know that information.
What's that?
When's the last time Country Club Estates has met and not pushed off? Like last June, July?
It was when John, we were real sick. They pulled it off and then it was Joey asked for an extension and another extension, and then that was basically ended on.
And it's on extension again until July 13th, 2022.
It's been long enough that I threw away all that.
Oh, I saw mine.
I've been covering it up like a year.
Brendan, no comments.
Thirty pounds of paper.
Other than signing a few minutes, I think that I could look at an, a motion to adjourn.
Well, you don't need to find out.
All right, besides signing.
We were so close.
Almost.
What I'm doing is I'll just move this stuff and then everybody can kind of move over here, I think.
Rick, this one you need to sign. And this one needs to be signed by Brendan. Brendan, you also, when you come in, wanna jot down any notes that you have April 21st minutes to sign?
Mine.
Okay.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can see them.
Here, I'll turn them, I'll turn them for you.
I just remembered, it's my old homepage.
There's no signature signed. Come on, I just, come on, I just.
Yeah, I think I can just slide down.
All right, I see what you're saying. Okay, I'll move this.
Try not to wrestle with all of them.
Right? That's what I said.
Yep. Take your book there.
Today's June 2nd, right?
A little more fine than the zombie board, isn't it?
Mark that one.
It's definitely different.
You can make your paperwork out of there if you want, or you can, you wanna leave it?
That's right.
You want to just grab.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to you later, but let's look. Just get the updated version of the bylaws and whatnot. Yeah. It's probably kicking around somewhere.
I have a certified copy if you want.
Oh, that'd be great.
I'll drop it, yeah.
Make a copy.
You know, I have a couple for the bylaw committee.
Yeah, I had, I have Brendan. I don't know if you can hear me. I think he said he would, he would bring his out.
Awesome. Great.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can use it on if you like. Cause I usually, I try to bring the tablet in and I can go off and stuff this off the website, so it's, but I can use it when I come into time and stuff.
No, I just think that way you can keep going in.
Brendan, the website's not the updated copy. Brendan?
Yep?
This is Tina. The website is not as updated copy. I think Steve's working on getting that all updated.
What is this?
This is.
The next one.
Just letting you know.
So, is what I have the updated copy of? Cause I might have been, I mean, grew up.
I'm not positive. We figured that one, we're doing the bylaw at the meeting. They didn't ask. So, if Amy has the same thing as you do, then you're good?
Thank you.
Here, John.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. So, this, so now this way.
Oh, wait, this might be all right.
So, we'll, we'll have to flip.
Yes, we'll.
I'm glad I used a whole bag of paper.
I don't even know, like, uh, like, what are, this, uh, it's like, you know.
Here, I'm gonna use a little bit of it.
Actually, we can do it this way. It's just like we're reconfiguring. Thank you.
So, the presidential pen you signed didn't give us something?
No, we're supposed to get, you get a different pen, it would be one you signed.
I'm sorry, I covered it. I know, I don't like it.
Did you sign your name upside down, Mark?
Yep.
Sort of, he's doing my
You just have to stamp.
I'm thinking it's the job of the new guys to make the motion to adjourn the meetings.
Yeah, hold on, before we do, we, we do have, just, is there anything that you were hoping to ask of us tonight? Alright, just figure that, give you the opportunity.
He was waiting for a while.
Oh, alright, cool.
It's his grandson.
I didn't know.
I know, I thought you did though, so I thought, I think we are all like That was
I'm like, it doesn't really look like you
That was good and proper, but I thought you were joking.
Whatever, it's all good, you just gotta do something.
Alright, so a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Alright, time, seven, eight thirty-two.
I got it.
Bye.